I heard Pat's gonna sing him down.
Everybody would leave. Are we good, Shane?
We're all good. Everyone's in from the waiting room and we are recording, so we're good to go.
Okay, so being six thirty on Wednesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-two, and having Quorum, I'll open the planning board meeting for this evening. Call it order, item one. Item two, we have, so after our call to order, I still read the town manager request to meet remotely and limit the number of people that may gather in one place. The Bridgewater Planning will be connected.
If you're in low participation for grace, it's not possible. No one person attended to the numbers of the public were permitted, but every action we made to ensure it's public for adequate access.
Proceedings in real time. This meeting is being recorded. And we'll post it within forty-eight hours on the town's website and on the town's social media pages. The following hours, the Bridgewater Planning Board of participating remotely. I'm Patrick Fisk, who chair Mr. Raymond McGimmie. Miss Aspore Rojas. Mr. Michael McDonald Device Chair. And Mr. Stephen Geller.
There's two associates anticipating or attending the meeting this evening. MJ Spagon. And Mr. Tyler.
Why should I call you Edward? Right? I'm sorry.
It's gonna work just fine.
All right. During this, during this meeting, all votes will be taken through roll calls. The following Bridgewater Town staff will be participating remotely as well. Mr. Shane O'Brien, the town of Bridgewater planner. That's it for staff, Shane, correct?
Just me.
At this point, everyone's mics will be at this time, everyone's mic is muted. The board's mics be unmuted through the whole meeting. As items appear on the agenda, the projects represent mics be unmuted. If the project is still a public hearing and allows a public comment, we ask to use chat feature to ask your question by listing your name and address any question. The host was Mr. O'Brien will recognize the questions in order. You can use the raise my hand feature in the participant menu and you'll be unmuted when the chat and when the host recognize you. Again, please name an address before asking a question. If you're on the phone, you can start and I had to raise your hand. So, Mr. O'Brien, you and I should probably connect and I'm still going off the form from March twelfth, twenty twenty, and gavel up in some of it because now it's the town manager's order. So maybe.
I should clean this up.
Yeah, and we can add the additional language on the Governor Baker's extension of it as well, because I believe the allowance for these remote meetings are extended until, I believe, sometime next year. But yeah, we can, we can modify the language for that, so it's.
I'll, I'll ignore you what I have, just because I, I say that to myself every meeting and then I don't connect with you, so just I, I'll send it over to you.
Sure thing, I'll have them.
I'm, I'm deleting some stuff and skipping over it as I'm reading it because it doesn't apply anymore. I just, maybe just so it's clean the next time, so. All right, so the first item after call to order, I have two is public hearing. This is two ten Broad Street presented by two ten Broad Street Realty LLC. This is a site plan on a special permit. This was continued from August third and, and the August seventeenth being. Apparently, the applicant has submitted a continuation request to September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Are there any representatives here that want to discuss it, or, or should we just take a vote to continue it?
Um, I don't believe there's any representatives here for this. I received a letter August thirty-first from Eric Diaz, asking for two ten Broad Street, that the public hearing be extended to, scheduled to the next meeting, which will be September twenty-first. I will note that Eric and, and I had a conversation where he is still working on some updates to the plans. He had a question about some access issues and potential changes to a parking layout with an abutting property, so I don't want to speak too much on it because it's still a continuing conversation, but I, I have been in contact with Mr. Diaz on their, their progress on their project.
All right, great. And I, I see an packet, the letter from Strong Point, dated August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, so if somebody's willing to make a motion, if there's no further discussion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue it to, I'm sorry, was the date September twenty-first, twenty-first at six thirty?
Do you have a second? By Mr. Geller, so motion by Mr. McDonald, second by Mr. Geller. Any discussion? Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Rojas?
Yes.
Oh, yes. All right, thank you. All right, so going back to the agenda, item three, we have an A and I for six eighty-one Plymouth Street. Is the applicant or the engineer here to discuss this?
Uh, I believe we have the applicant here. I will allow them to unmute and go from there. Oh, I think here.
We're just looking to.
Sir, just so we know who you are for the record.
Sorry.
Say your name and address, please.
My name is David Hartree and my wife is Laurel Hartree. We live at actually six seventy-three Plymouth Street. Laurel is the executor of the trust that owns six ninety-nine Plymouth Street. Her father used to live in six eighty-one Plymouth Street. He passed away. Our daughter bought the property. The Quonset Hut actually is part of six ninety-nine Plymouth Street, which is owned by the family trust. We want to move the property line so that it becomes part of six eighty-one. There's quite a bit of, of family tools, equipment, things in the Quonset Hut, and we just want it to stay in the family, which is six eighty-one Plymouth Street. Our only concern was that the, the distance between the two is only twenty feet and that's cutting it ten feet on each side. We didn't think we needed a variance because they're existing buildings. I'm not sure what's going on there, but we're not looking to do anything except for move a property line to incorporate that into six eighty-one Plymouth Street from six ninety-nine Plymouth. There's plenty of area still at six ninety-nine Plymouth Street. And it's basically a solving a family legacy kind of thing.
Shane, could you, could you, where is the, just looking at frontage area or access, things of that nature, so the lot that this is being removed from, I guess, right? So the dotted line represents the existing property line?
That is correct. It's, it's an odd shaped lot to begin with, where it has this kind of jagged shape to it.
So, lot one will remain at twenty-three thousand square feet. What is the total square footage of this map, thirty-six lot thirty-seven? Now, I, I assume it makes, meets the square footage requirement, is correct?
Uh, it does, so it'd be whatever its current square footage is, I would say be more than twenty-three thousand with additionally that seven thousand added on to it.
So I, and I asked you this earlier today, we've never signed it. It's, I mean, I, I've never voted for it, even though I understand what they're trying to do and but how do, we're creating two lots with two non-conforming buildings now?
I would say that essentially this property is coming before the board. That's potentially creating two non-conforming lots or making both of these lots more potentially non-conforming.
Well, not non-conforming lots, but non-conforming structures.
Correct, non-conforming to our current zoning or residential seat. However, I, I would argue that the, the purview of the board is not to view this as in from a zoning perspective, it's essentially looking at it from a perspective of, of an approval not required plan. The applicant does state on their plans that endorsement of this plan by the board doesn't constitute the opinion of the board in terms of the zoning bylaws and ordinances. Ultimately, that comes down to our zoning enforcement officer or the building inspector. So endorsement wouldn't prevent this property from being non-conforming or having a zoning enforcement issue. I will say that Steve Solari, the building inspector, did look at this plan, had some concerns, especially being that the garage and the Quonset Hut are now going to be essentially less than that twenty feet that's required for side setbacks, so.
Yeah, because typically, typically we'd have those buildings say to be raised.
Sure. Uh, I, I historically, I, I can't speak of what the board has done in the past, but I, I can say based on my professional opinion that looking at this property from a zoning perspective, the only thing that we should be looking at is frontage and anything else that doesn't conform to our zoning bylaws or ordinances shouldn't be in the purview of the board at this time.
Well, how, how could we just look at frontage when the area matters, when setbacks matter? I mean, we can't.
That it's based on mass general law for approvals not required. I can, I can send over and, you know, talk about the nineteen eighty case of, let me, let me look it up.
But, but I guess, I guess, so, so now we, let's say we approve this, right? How, how does the building inspector follow up on this to make sure they either get a variance to tear the buildings down?
Well, I would, I would note, I would say that I can make it a condition of this approval that the building inspector is notified of said.
We can't, but we can't condition an A and R.
Well, I can, I can alert the building inspector of this A and R endorsement.
I, I'm just not comfortable creating two non, I mean, we're creating two non-conforming structures. It's, but they, the lot, everything conforms now. We're changing a lot line to create two non-conforming structures.
What if we change the lot line to only create one non-conforming structure?
I don't, I mean, I don't, I think we'd really need the building, I mean.
It's.
And board questions? I mean, I don't want to be the only one to speak, so. So, so Shane, is this really, you're saying it doesn't need our approval?
No, we need to, the board needs to endorse it. You know, in some cases, I, I, I would recommend that the board endorse it based on the, it meets our requirements for an approval not required plan. You know, it's not the board's jurisdiction to look at this from a zoning perspective. There just has, if, if on the plan, it states the intent of the plans for lot one to transfer parcel A to the adjacent lot thirty-seven. And that's fine, and both properties are, have, have frontage on it. I know they provide setbacks on the plans, but it's really not the board's purview to, to make zoning determinations through approval not required plans. In the end, I'm comfortable with it, as well as the plan states that the endorsement of the plan does not constitute the board's opinion on anything zoning for the town. I understand the board's issue, there may be issues in terms of the board endorsing something that becomes non-conforming. However, that's kind of the jurisdiction of the, the building inspector and the applicant for their, the applicant and their engineer slash surveyor to do their due diligence on these matters.
If I may. Shane, if we had a, if you know, like if, if we endorse this, we then put the building inspector in a bind, don't we, do we not? Because if he says it's non-conforming, then he's gonna have to require that one or both buildings be torn down, correct?
Sure. But denying this sets up a, I would say, a potential legal battle where the board would, potential legal battle where the board and historically speaking, A and R plans that that boards have not endorsed that show zoning violations have been overturned.
So that's my next question, Mr. Jimmy. I don't mean to interrupt you all, so with that, do you have another question? So, so this would be, so this would be up to the building inspector to tell the applicant that they either must go to the zoning board of appeals to keep the two buildings or tear them down.
Correct.
And they create an own.
They'd be creating their own hardship, correct? If they were cut to come into the zoning board with this plan.
So Shane, I I would vote, I mean, I would vote against it the way it is. Just because I, I feel putting the building inspector, the applicant, everybody in a bad spot. Does it make sense to see if the applicant would be willing to grant this an extension till next week? That's about next meeting and have Jason Rollins give an opinion or attorney?
Um, if that's up to the board purview, what I'm telling you right now would probably be the same thing that Jason would be telling you. He would probably say that it states on the plan that it doesn't constitute anything or an endorsement of our zoning bylaws. And I would say that that would be probably similar. I'm trying to figure out a solution, if, if the board has a solution in terms of potential issues, I think regardless, you're seeing if this Quonset Hut's being transferred to the adjacent property, you're seeing an issue with the garage being less than twenty feet anyways. So I, I, I try to figure out in my head what would create a solution to this where the, that parcel A property is transferred to lot thirty-seven, not requiring a variance. Nor, nor, nor an A and R plan through the board.
But I have to move the class.
Yeah, which would be, I would say, a, a task.
If, for any reason, the building departments in one of the buildings hadn't come down, we would leave, leave it like it is. It, you know, leave it with six ninety-nine. Because that's not an option.
So do we want to get an opinion, what Mr. Solari would want? If we approve this and talk to Mr. Attorney Rollins about it before we do anything? I just, I'm, I'm uncomfortable putting the applicant and the building inspector in this position and creating two hardships by approving an A and R.
I agree. I would prefer to have Jason give us an opinion. I didn't, I'm, I'm Shane is probably exactly right, but I think that we need outside opinion here.
Oh, don't get me wrong, if, if, if what I, if what I just heard, right? If we approve this or endorse, or endorse it and the building inspector comes back and says you have to tear down both buildings, the applicant is telling me that that's not doable, then I gotta do it, and they just gotta leave everything the way it is because then I gotta take it down. Is that correct?
Correct.
I just heard.
Correct. This is family-owned property and the middle garage has a lot of equipment in it, a lot of personal things. And the wooden garage is obviously part of six ninety-nine. It's at the end of their driveway, the middle garage is a little further away, but as you can see from the plants, they, they, obviously that would do it, the variances, if we need them, we need them, we can I, I have a set of plans, variance plans, because the engineer gave us those first. And then we were under the impression we didn't need them because they were existing buildings. And we weren't, we're not gonna build, we're not gonna do anything with them, we're just moving a property line to if we all drop dead and my daughter still has the Quonset Hut, it doesn't go with the rest of the property and the trust.
So right, so right now, Shane, the properties conform to everything, right, as existing?
Uh, I would believe so. I don't have a everything, I don't believe there's any zoning violations at this time on that lot one, uh, six ninety-nine.
But if we were to endorse this right now, we'd be creating a non, two non-conform.
Well, the board wouldn't be creating any issue. They would be endorsing this plan and the, whoever would be, and the applicant would be creating these uh, zoning violations.
And so I'm reading what you had sent us earlier tonight, Shane, so I, I understand that it says the above the above endorsement is, is not a determination or conformance with zoning regulations.
That's correct.
No, no determination compliance with zonex have been made, but after this, in order to keep those buildings, in order to continue, they, they need to tear them down and variance.
Like I said, I can't, I can't make that determination for the zoning enforcement officer or the building inspector. You know, he, he is, he, he looked at the plans and had concerns about the ten point-two foot setbacks where the requirements are.
Yeah, that's, that's my concern too, so.
But like I said, there's not, there's no issue with the board endorsing this plan. I would say that I am, the, their law allows the board to endorse this plan and is more favorable for the board endorsing this plan rather than not endorsing it. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the board giving it more time and getting to a point where we feel comfortable for an endorsement.
We, we have a, we have a time limitation on this, correct, of how many days?
Correct, but we can, we can ask for a time freeze.
From the applicant?
Correct.
So sir, would you be willing to allow us you know, some time to get the right answers so we make the right decision so it doesn't put you in a bind or us in a bind?
Of course, we wanna, we wanna do this right in the long run, of course, yeah.
Do we need anything in writing or is just this recording, all right, from the applicant?
I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Hartley. I will have, I'll come up with a sign that we, we're continuing this to the next meeting. So I'll, I'll talk to David.
Yeah, if we, if we, you know, if we could just touch base with Attorney Rollins, I think, I mean, unless the board wants to vote on it tonight and Mr. Solari, the building inspector, because he's the one that's gonna have to deal with it, so.
Sure.
But I, I, I'm uncomfortable. I, if, if we had to vote tonight, I would vote no.
Rather you didn't vote tonight, then? I, I really have no problem doing this, right? This is a, this is a family legacy thing, so there's no, there's no immediate rush on it. Let's just do it right.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we endorse this night, we'd be actively putting the applicant in a, a condition where they'd have to either tear a building down, which understandably, they don't want to tear their own structures that they're trying to keep down. Or they'd presumably be getting some conflict with the building inspector, and I don't know if there's like fines there or something, but we'd, we'd be actively harming the applicant by endorsing this tonight. So, I don't think anybody wants.
We actually have a set of plans that are called variance plans. They look exactly like the ones in front of you. Some of the wording is different, so I can get, get them to the building inspector or whoever needs them.
Maybe that's the step we need, maybe get the variance first. You know, then you do these, you know what I mean? And I don't know if that's the right way, but maybe, maybe we should.
Yeah, in terms of directing Mr. Hart, Hartree, I did see these variance plans, but when there was a discussion of a transfer of property, I, I felt that the proper way would be this approval not required plans. You know, understanding that it may need a variance is really kinda, you know, ultimately, I, I may in the future, I probably should in the future to have a discussion with the building inspector when it comes to certain plans, because in cer- certain situations, and from my my professional experience, I would receive a planning board plan, an A and I like this, which you know, didn't really have any issues and the board would endorse. But however, it could create an issue in the future with a, a different department that does that zoning enforcement, so.
Well, and then the other thing too, Shane, is if he didn't get a, a variance, he's probably coming back with an eighty-one X to unwind the form A, correct?
Um, sure, it would depend on if he, if they decided to have this plan stamped and brought to the clerk's office and recorded at the registry of deeds as well.
And so I'd like to avoid all that, just get it right, you know?
Sure, I'm, I'm, I think fourteen days is a good amount of time.
Does the board want to act on it? Do we want to go forward with checking in with Mr. Solari and Mr. Attorney Rollins or?
Yeah, I'd rather wait.
Yeah, I would too. From, from my perspective, I don't remember anything like this coming before us before, and as much as Mr. Bryant is probably correct, I think we need a legal opinion as to what our responsibility is in terms of form A. Maybe we should be approving it as is, but I think I'd like to have that clarified before we vote.
Shane, the, the letter that you sent us today in regards to form A's with zoning violations, right?
I said that only to you, Pat.
So, so, so is that, is that referencing raw land now, or is that, that, is that referencing lots with? Because I could see, I could see, I could see raw land because you simply put, it's not a buildable lot under zoning laws or something like that. Does that, is there, you know, if, if there are structures on it, is there a different threshold?
Uh, I would say no. I would say that the, kind of the concept of that legal opinion is more so based on that, and the purview of the board is to just look at the, their pers, their own subdivision rules and regulations, making sure that there's some sort of transfer of property or if there's frontage on some sort of public streets and that all parties are in favor of it and that the endorsement of the board doesn't constitute any endorsement of our zoning bylaws and ordinances.
So just thinking out loud, right? Let's say that I built a two-family in residential D, you need twenty thousand square feet of land, right? I build the property and now I want to carve off fifteen hundred, so now it's eighteen-five, and that's what a single family requires. We could allow that structure to become non-conforming?
Uh, you wouldn't allow it to be non-conforming. The app, the applicant would be creating their own hardship and a, illegal, illegally non-conforming structure.
And that's, so we're doing the same thing in this instance, we're creating an illegal, lawful construction.
You guys aren't creating anything. You're just endorsing the plan.
Right, the applicant is by putting the line now.
That is correct.
And then they would have to go to ZB A and remove them.
For both properties, correct?
All right, let's, if, if the applicant's willing to, let's get some more input on it, I guess. If that's the will of the board.
All right, so I'll just, I'll talk to Mr. Hartree and we'll have come in, I'll, I'll create a form, Pat, for a continuation of an A and R.
I, I think we have, I think we have an extension form right in the back of our rules and regs.
All right, I'll have Mr. Hartree sign that.
All right. Are you okay with that, Mr. Hartree?
Whatever we need to do, sure.
All right. I, I, I don't think we're trying to be difficult. I think we're just trying to make sure we don't put us in a bind or you in a bind, if you don't.
Honestly, it wouldn't be me. It would be my daughter and I'd rather get it right now. So, yeah, let's do this right. Because that's what's happening. That's who would hit somebody down the road, you know, so.
All right, so so if somebody wants to make some sort of a motion either to endorse it to continue or have more discussion, please do so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue this to, uh, September twenty-first, six thirty.
All right, Mr. McDonald, do you have a second?
I can second that.
All right, Ms. Rojas. Any further discussion?
I would just add that we, an opinion for Attorney Rollins in the meantime.
Yeah, we could send, have Mr. O'Brien send it over to him to get an opinion.
Yeah, I'll have a conversation with Jason, because I'll be reiterating his opinion in a letter, so.
I also get, I completely get what Mr. O'Brien's saying. Uh, I think the upside of doing this is, you know, once we have like confirmation of what the consequences of this could be, then the applicant knows further, and if they still want to go ahead with it, and it's our, it's our duty to, to approve it, then, you know, I'd be happy to do that. Just make sure everybody has all the relevant information, so they know any potential consequences that could come from it.
If I may, what, what, what's bothersome to me is that if we are required to approve this, we are potentially setting up a really difficult situation, because if the zoning officer says they're not conforming, they've got to come down. And Mr. O'Brien says, well, they're not gonna come down. Then we have a real bind, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't be in that position at all.
Yeah, just another thought, and the, the engineer's not here, but is it as simple as, you know, we noted on the plans, not a buildable lot to be raised, et cetera? Does it make sense to have a note for each garage saying either to be raised or have a ZB A variance required?
Uh, I, I would say that it wouldn't be in the board's purview to determine if structures should be taken down or not through A and R plans.
Well, I'm saying, you, well, I'm just saying either to be raised or obtain a Z B A permit, right?
Um. Like I said, I, I would say that i- it's not the board's. Purview to kind of, the board, like I said, on the, well. On the thing I sent over to you earlier, Pat, typically. Planning boards place or ask for certain language to be placed on plans, saying that this is not constituting an opinion of the board. Of anything with zoning law or the zoning ordinances, which the applicant does provide on their plans, um, which is typical of a lot of plans that we do have. Um. So, language like that, I think is, is okay. Um, just stating that this, the board, not the board feels that this is a zoning violation, but the board. Endor- does not endorse this plan based on anything in terms of our zoning bylaws or any opinions on our zoning bylaws. Uh, what, uh, just one more thing, I, I would also probably ask or recommend Mr. Hartree. Uh, if their surveyors could also potentially. Create a solution also as well this, or if there's a solution, uh, we can't essentially design. Some of these, uh, plans, however, they may or should have the expertise in terms of understanding our. Zoning ordinances as to not place you in a bind as well as the board in a bind. Um, so I don't know. Thompson's Island.
Do we know, do we know how long that structure's been there?
Which one?
The Quonset Hut?
Correct.
Seventies? Built in the seventies.
And the other one was built in the fifties, my dad built the wooden.
So the seventies was after subdivision control law correction?
Uh, subdivision control law was before the seventies, I believe. Uh, I'd have to check.
This, this decision, it's a smally decision that I just looked up. So the approval of the subdivision control was not required, the plan showed the division of the tract landed to lots, which made two existing buildings, residents. The bond and the residents were standing when the subdivision control went into effect in how much? One lot, so. I still don't think we can sign it, but.
Like I said, I can, uh, we can talk to Jason in terms of. All things A and R law. Have a good hearty conversation with him. Um. But I, I, I just would recommend that the applicant also go back to their surveyor and engineer and. Maybe ask them to create a more conforming plan if possible.
And he may agree with us if he did a Z B A.
I don't see any other option, um. Then, you know, cutting them down the middle, uh, cutting it real close to one of them. And then you only have one that might be a variance, but, um. There's really no other option than to get that on to six eighty-one. Plymouth Street to become part of that property. You know?
All right. Um. So we have a motion in a second to continue, we've had enough discussion on it, I believe, unless there's anything else. Someone will take the role. Uh, Mr. Jamie?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
And I mean, yes, so we continue it until next meeting. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Shane, we'll talk to you, thank you.
Very much. Talk to you tomorrow or soon.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um. Shane, next item up, we have CPC representative under board business.
That is correct.
Has anybody decided, I, I said I'd do it unless somebody else wants to do it, I. I'll do it just to make sure it's filled and we're represented. Uh. I can do it until somebody wants to do it, I can do it, so, if, if somebody wants to do it. Step forward, if not, I'll fill the seat.
I point to the time slot, this doesn't work for me, otherwise I'd love to, if that changes in the future, I'll let you know.
No, no, you know, I. But. All right, so if somebody wants to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Driscoll, our representative.
Sir, a second?
Okay.
Mr. Jimmy? We just had discussion, so, you know, if, in the future, if anybody has an interest, I'm happy to. To step aside, but just so we're represented now, I know Mr. Geller had some time constraints to have the stuff down, so. I'll fill the seat, uh. And we'll move from there, so, any further discussion?
Yeah, if, if I'm able to in the future, I'll, I'll be happy to, uh, to take that on.
But, uh.
Right now.
Uh, all right, so there's no further discussion? Let's take the role, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
So Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yeah.
I guess I may.
Yes.
Um, next up, we have, um, planning board minutes for seven, six, twenty-two, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make motions per the minutes.
Motion, Mr. Jimmy, do your second?
I can second that.
Uh, Ms. Ross? Any discussion on the minutes at seven, six? I think they're all, um, Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Jamie?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Um, planning board subdivision rules and regulations for twenty twenty-two updates, if Shane's as yours, I'll let you figure it.
Sure thing, all right, so it's been a couple of years since, uh, I think the board's done a deep dive into the subdivision rules and regs. Um, I myself being new, and, uh, our town engineer, uh, Greg Tansy being new, eh, so I, I felt that I should. Let the board know if the board feels comfortable with, uh, myself going through our current subdivision rules and regs, uh, and look at, you know, create a redline version, and create some updates that are more. Um. Up to date on some certain things that we may be, uh, wanting to see changed, I think one of the big ones, um. That we've discussed in prior time, um, or actually, two of them was, uh, I guess their definition of substantial completion in terms of subdivisions. As well as types of street trees, um, for subdivision, so. Um, I just wanna let the board know that I'm kind of, uh, diving into our current regs, um, and if the board has any opinions or comments. Um. I'm happy to accept them, and I'll be presenting them at some point. Um, fall, winter time, if the board would like to place it on a meeting.
So Shane, are you looking for us just to give you the go-ahead to go start redlining it, or do you, are you to the point where you want us to schedule a meeting?
Uh, this is just my stu- this is my. Okay, by the board to go ahead and do it, you guys may feel that the subdivision rules and regs look great. Um, but I want your blessing and. Essentially the. Ability to start looking it over and add my redlines.
Boy, I'm doing a review either way, you know, might as well take a look.
Sure thing.
No harm in doing it, more positives than negatives, I would go ahead and do it.
Any other comments? Shane, maybe when you do things, I know there's been a big push for street trees, and. Actually, while I'm sitting here, just got an email from a resident asking about native species. To be, to be only, there's the only types of street trees, believe it or not. Timing is good, so maybe we could, like, there should be a tree board or a tree committee soon, maybe we should loop them in, so.
Yeah, I, I would, I would just state that, uh, when we do amend subdivision rules and regulations, we are looking solely for subdivisions. So when we're dealing with retreat lots or site plan reviews or special permits. I, I would say that there needs to be recommendations and changes through our zoning ordinance process. Um, in terms of, um, those changes.
If I could add, uh, this point, uh. Sort of fits in, um. I and a couple of people are meeting with, uh, town manager next week. Uh, to go over the proposed permanent tree board, uh, we, we have, uh. He has the recommendations that we came, that we did this summer. And, uh, part of that will be with regard to types of trees that are planted in town. And so once the, uh, assuming that the town manager, um. It's not negative to the proposal. At some point in the next month or two, we should have a permanent tree board approved by the council, and, uh, hopefully that will work in conjunction with the other boards in terms of. Planning the right trees and, uh. Making sure that the trees we do plant are taken care of.
Okay, so, I mean, I'd echo the other two comments, I think it makes sense to have you. Do with our review, what we have, and maybe give us ideas and best practices and. Have a meeting where we can decide what we wanna change and not change, yeah.
Yeah, and as part of that too, cuz I know our applications are tied with our subdivision rules and regs, and we're in this process of, um. Kind of transitioning to an online permitting application, you may have seen some of our, uh. Online permits through the application process, uh, the most recent A and R, um, did one online. Um, so kind of transitioning some of our applications to, uh, this online version. As well as kind of modifying a couple of those applications, is kind of an ongoing process, so I just wanna make sure everything's, uh. Up to date with those as well.
When was the last amendment, was it?
Twenty eighteen.
Okay. And prior to that, it was twenty twelve, I think, right?
Uh, I believe so, there's been some. I believe some gaps in between.
With the, uh, the online application, oh, sorry, back, go.
Oh, go ahead.
Just a question about the online application system, is that? Are they gonna, you know, transfer to like an exclusively online model, or are people still gonna be able to do it, uh, you know, like?
We're hoping, we're hoping that it's gonna be totally exclusive online, we do have the software, um. In front of the building department to allow, we use, currently use permidize for our building applications, and we're hoping to use our, um. Our planning board applications, our Z B A applications, our site plan special permit applications, all through, um, this software as well, cuz it does have the capabilities and. It, it's nice to be able to, um, link everything together and, you know, communicate with the other departments.
And Shane, I'm looking at our subdivision rules and regs, there is a request for extension of time in there. But it says for approval of a subdivision plan described below, so we'd have to.
We can add some things that we have missing.
I would cross it up, put A and R or something, so.
Yeah, cuz we've also had, uh, um. I think we've had discussion when it came to like Green Place and previous other places of what, what the definition of substantial. Completion of a subdivision is, is it when they get their road accepted, is it when? The, uh. You know, all the bond monies are returned, or is it when the work's actually, uh, complete, I think we had that discussion too, in terms of Scotland Boulevard.
Correct.
So, anything that we can nail out and define and just kind of figure some problem children that may have. Been issues in the past, especially with like A and R plans as well, we can, you know, in the basis, in, you know, what we can require. On A and R plans that's allowed by law, we can add some language in terms of that too, or, you know, that the building inspector, you know, gives a. Review or a comment letter on it.
Okay, yeah, our, our only extension is. There's a, um, planning board Form H request for extension of time for subdivision and special permits.
Well, I can, I can, I can say to the board right now that, that this, this A and R has not been. Stamped in by the clerk's office, so there is no current timeframe based on M G L at this time.
All right. Um, do you wanna vote, or is that feedback good enough for you to go?
I, feedback's fine, we don't have to do roll call.
Okay. Are there any board and committee reports? Ray, you kinda gave your report already.
I did, I'm all set.
Is there a plan that's reported, although you basically wrapped that into?
Yeah, one more thing, I think we're gonna have a busy September twenty-first meeting, um, I just wanna note that we only have one meeting in October. Unless this is a necessity to have a special meeting, um.
What do we have, what do we have for September twenty-first?
Was that, we have, uh, we have some bond reduction requests, we have, um. Lot release requests, um. Potentially to ten Broad Street, we have the A and R. Um, but lem- I don't have a, an agenda set yet. Um, but we do have substantially more items on the next meeting than we did last meeting, no new special permits, new, new, uh, site plans at this time, but. We shall see, but.
There are other releases requested.
What's that?
We have a lot releases being requested.
Um, I believe it is a lot release issue that came up in March of twenty twenty-one regarding, um.
For the open space.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't have the, uh, I don't have a confirmation.
That wasn't a lot release, that was a cut, release of covenant, right?
That's correct. Um, but that should be, I, I need to confirm with their, uh, the applicant, their attorney, um, if they wanna be, cuz. They intended on being at today's meeting, but they had a conflict.
Do we even, do we have a legal opinion on that one, cuz that's where.
I did have a conversation with Attorney Rollins.
Okay. And you'll put that in writing for the board?
I will.
All right. All right, if we don't have anything else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd just like to make the comment that I apologize to all you. Yeah, I've been yawning throughout this, and I, I, it's not that I'm. Totally bored by what's been saying, I have turbo allergies, and they just make me very sleepy, so. Hopefully I will be more alert next meeting, and, uh, I apologize if you think I'm just bored to hell by this, this meeting.
Oh, I, I feel, I feel you, right, uh, all day, it's, it's the issues of, I still have my, all the A Cs in the windows. And all that cool air, and everything's coming in with them on.
It's so terrible.
So I, I.
You're fired, right?
I'll yawn too. That's a real one.
Oh, God, take a pill and get over it, will you?
That's the worst.
When we're up for our raises next year, you know, we'll remember this. All right. Um. Any other comments? If there's no other comments, we have a motion to adjourn.
Some more.
After Ray says it, my eyes are starting to water, it must be my allergies too.
Oh, my God, people.
Do you, do you have a motion to adjourn, was that Mr. Geller?
Yes, I was, some more.
I'll second.
Is that Mr. McDonald?
Yep.
Any discussion? Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Jimmy?
Yes.
Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Oh, yes, good night, everyone, thank you, Shane.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good one.